Is there anybody else Karen that you would like me to bring in?
No, not at this time. It looks like we have six public participants.
We have actually, let's see.
Or wait a minute, you're right. I scrolled all the way down.
There's a few more. I don't know if there's anybody else there.
Ten.
Yep, we have a total of ten. We have a couple of participants joining us by phone as well. And ready whenever you are.
Okay, I am ready.
All right.
All right, we will go ahead and get started. Good morning. My name is Stephanie Marshall and I am the City of Bend hearings officer assigned to this matter today. It is Tuesday, November 16, 2020, little after nine AM and the matter before me is file number PZ-20-0259. This is an application for tentative plat approval, tentative plan approval, excuse me. And I'm going to go ahead with some introductory comments and and then I'm going to actually turn it over to either Juan or Karen to go through how this hearing will be conducted via WebEx and to ensure that anybody that wishes to participate can do so. So again, this is for file number PZ-20-0259. This is a type three quasi judicial hearing on a tentative plan application. I, as a hearings officer, I have no interest in the application, in the property, in the applicant or any organization associated with the applicant. I've had no ex parte contact, which means outside of this hearing right now with staff other than communication to set the date for the hearing and to receive and review the staff recommendation to the hearings officer. I believe that I can conduct this hearing and make a decision on the standards in a fair and impartial way. And if there's anyone that has any objection to my hearing this matter this morning, please indicate so now. Okay, we will proceed. The application will be decided on the standards that are set forth in the staff report. And if there are any other standards that you believe are relevant to my decision, please indicate in your testimony and if the record is left open after the close of this hearing, which we'll discuss towards the end of the hearing, you may do so written. Let's see here. Oh, yes, and associated with this, there is a raise it or waive it rule that applies, which means if there's something you wish me to consider, you must bring it to my attention when the record is open. Otherwise, if the matter is appealed or if you wish to appeal the matter, you won't be able to raise new evidence that haven't been raised to me. So I get the first shot at all of this. Okay, so I mentioned earlier that we'll go over the procedures as to participating via WebEx. And after that, we will hear from the staff and then we will hear from the applicant and then there will be an opportunity for members of the public to testify and then there'll be rebuttal at the end. And if there's a request to leave the record open following the close of this public hearing, then we'll discuss that at that time. So with that, I will turn it over to either Juan or Karen.
Go ahead, Juan.
Thank you so much. Welcome everyone. At this point, what I'd like to go over is the instructions for those of you who are joining us in the hearing. If you are joining us live via WebEx on your computer or your mobile device, you can see these instructions. Please, when it's time to provide your testimony, click on the participants icon and then what you want to do is look on the bottom right-hand side of the participants view and look for the little hand icon as it's shown here. And that's how you're going to let us know that you want to provide testimony. When we see your hand raised, we'll see them in the order that hands are raised and then we'll be calling on each one of you one at a time. So also, if you are joining us by phone, what we ask you to do is to use the keypad on your telephone and dial the star key followed by the number three. That will also show us that you're raising your hand and we'll call on you. We only see your area code and the first three digits of your phone number. So we'll call on that area code and first three digits. You'll hear two beeps and that will signal you that you've been unmuted. So at that time, you can proceed with your comment. Those are all the instructions that I have at this time. Is there anything else that you'd like me to share Karen or our hearing officer, Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Juan.
Thank you.
So Juan, can you put up the presentation?
Yes ma'am, here we go. And it should be on the screen now.
It is, and do I have?
You should, here one second. There you go. You should have it now.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, good morning. This is Karen Swenson with the City of Bend Planning Division, senior planner in that division. Today, as hearings officer Marshall said, we're looking at the Rotor subdivision of PZ-20-0569. And there you go. Now I lost the screen. Hold on. It's okay Juan, why don't you just advance it for me? All right, so today, this is the Rotor property that is under consideration. And it is zoned standard density residential RS and it's within the Lava Ridge refinement plan as are all the surrounding properties. The map on the left is kind of faint, I apologize for that, but it kind of gives you the main roads in the area. Empire to the south, Eighteenth to the east, and then Boyd Acres is right along the western property or western edge of that map. And so Boyd Acres Roads continues up and then touches the corner of the subject property and then heads north. And Morning Star Drive also extends across the east along the northern portion and continues east. As I mentioned, this subject property is 20.4 acres in size. Typically, properties 20 acres or more would be subject to master plan requirements. Except in the master plan section, any property that is within an existing refinement plan is exempt from master plan because it's been previously planned for a sub area. So it is not subject to the master plan requirements in the Bend Development Code. So this property is southeast of the corner of Boyd Acres Road and Morning Star Drive. Wishing Well subdivision is to the east and it was platted in 1994, 1995, different phases. Yardley Estates was platted in 2001 and 2004. And then to the west, Madison subdivision was platted in 2004 and 2006. And so each of those subdivisions have roads that stub to the subject property. Boyd Park noted there in the green is to the southeast. It, an informal trail abuts the subject property, but that park also abuts Town Drive. Next slide, please. The proposal today is for a 141 lot subdivision. It would be built out in six phases, the first phase starting in the northeast corner and working to the west. As I mentioned, this subdivision has existing streets stubbed to the subject property. So this subdivision extends those existing streets. Silas Drive would be extended from the west. It is, it is 32 feet wide and will continue as such. Peel Street from the south, it's also 32 feet wide in pavement and would be extended all the way up to Morning Star. And then Town Drive from the east is currently 36 feet would be extended to the western property line. Would not be extended all the way to Boyd Acres Road because there is an intervening large property that that road would need to continue in through that is not part of this subdivision. It owns, it's owned by a different property owner. There would be two new intersections with Morning Star Drive at the northern end. Peel Street would continue all the way through the subdivision and that would be aligned with Ridgefield Drive on the north side of Morning Star Drive. And Road B in the center would be aligned with Carly Lane to the north. Road A on the farther and far far west portion of the subdivision terminates in a cul-de-sac in the northwest corner. And then also just note, just over and south of the alignment of Town Drive high capacity power line that would remain. And so the easement is shown on the lots that are that are impacted. Next slide, please. Just an overview particularly for the individuals who are joining us from the public. Just a little overview of the standard density residential lot requirements. There's a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet. And those, those lots must be a minimum width of 40 feet wide. And if they're a corner lot, then it must be 45 feet wide. There are residential compatibility setbacks if that, if the abutting property that's not part of the subdivision exceeds 20,000 square feet in size. And so there are some large properties to the west and so six of the proposed lots are impacted by that. Those residential compatibility setbacks that will be imposed at the time of building permit. And so that's another additional setback that those, those homes on those lots will be subject to. And then also on the east side, there's a maximum floor area ratio of 0.6 that will be applied to new lots that are less than 6,000 square feet that about, but the Wishing Well subdivision, which is an older subdivision. And so in the floor area section of the code, it would apply to all of the proposed lots along the eastern boundary except for four that are larger than 6,000 square feet. And again, that would apply at the time of building permit submission. So that's not part of any conditions of approval in terms of how they create those lots as part of this subdivision, but it will be, they are conditions of approval at the time of building permit. Next slide, please. So property type sidewalks will be required on all streets, including on the south side of the existing Morning Star Drive. Landscape strips will be required with street trees. And then a 10-foot wide path from the cul-de-sac bulb to Morning Star Drive will also be required. That is not only required because of maximum block perimeter standards, but also the construction standards in the Lava Ridge refinement plan. As I mentioned, the master plan requirements do not apply to this property. And so there is no open space requirement that applies. No new park is proposed or required. As part of all subdivisions, the Bend Parks and Recreation District is contacted and has a opportunity to respond to indicate whether there is a park need in the area. And as part of the record, the Bend Parks and Recreation District indicated there is not a need based on their comprehensive plan due to the proximity of Boyd Park. There is an optional park noted in the Lava Ridge refinement plan. However, that is all it is, is optional and the applicant has chosen not to include it. And to follow up with BPRD in terms of access to Boyd Park, there's additional documentation in the record that BPRD indicated that the trail connection to the main part of Boyd Park can be obtained from the existing Town Drive frontage rather than the informal trail that abuts the subject property. Next slide, please. So there are several conditions of approval in the, in the staff report that I just want to touch on that the applicant has indicated interested in and will probably speak about today. There is a condition of approval to reconstruct the Boyd Acres Morning Star Drive intersection to a stop controlled at Morning Star where it intersects Boyd Acres. Currently, there's only a southbound stop sign only. There is extra rightway on the northwest corner of the curve. And the Lava Ridge refinement plan specifies a difference cross-section for Boyd Acres Roads, Boyd Acres Roads other than the local cross-section includes bike lanes. Boyd Acres Road continues to the north to two schools with one mile radius. So it, it was looked at for those multimodal connections that's required in Bend Development Code, Chapter 4.7. As shown in the applicant's traffic analysis, more traffic utilizes Boyd Acres Road as the through movement rather than Boyd Acres Road to Morning Star. And this realigned intersection will provide a continuous bike lane on Boyd Acres Road and will increase multi-motor safety, not only for bikes, but pedestrians as well as the crosswalk has shown in the conceptual intersection realignment there. Next slide, please. So there are two other conditions of approval I just want to touch on. One is regarding the Morning Star lift station. Ninety-one of the 141 lots will drain north to this lift station. And it could be that additional discharge may require the lift station to be upgraded. And we have, we as staff have proposed a condition of approval that the project engineer perform an analysis to indicate compliance with DEQ standards. This is not a condition to upgrade the lift station straight away. This is a condition of approval for them to perform the analysis. And if it shows that the lift station is substandard to accommodate these additional flows, then an upgrade could be necessary based on that analysis. Then finally, a very specific condition is where you see the red star to the left there. Those are lots five and six of Madison Phase Five subdivision. And those two lots are connected to a dry sewer main at the terminus of Silas Drive constructed and that dry sewer main is constructed to drain east to the subject property. This was permitted in 2006. There was a subject property for a subdivision, but then the recession happened and that application was withdrawn. So as part of this to connect to the, that dry sewer main to the, to the overall city sewer system, that connection to that existing manhole on the western property boundary would be required. And the proposal includes a sewer main inside of this drive to the property boundary. And we're just reiterating as staff that connection to that existing manhole required. Next slide, please. Regarding the public comments, as I meant, as I mentioned in the beginning of the staff report, that there was, this was initially reviewed as an administrative decision. And there was substantial public comment response. Thirty individuals submitted written comments. And each of those issues are addressed in the beginning of the staff report. Since the public hearing notice went out, when this was elevated to a public hearing, we just received one additional written comment. And it was consistent with those issues of concerns already in the staff report. Just to highlight, and this doesn't cover them all, but the primary concerns were cut through traffic on the private street, Town Drive within Wishing Well subdivision. This is a private street, but it does have a public access easement. The traffic impact on Sierra Drive to the south, Peel Street connecting to Sierra Drive, which connects Boyd Acres all the way over to Eighteenth Street, that the subdivision is not compatible with the larger abutting existing lots. That no open space was provided or very little, if at all, preservation of trees. And the construction impacts concerns about blasting, dust and noise. And then the narrow rear setbacks that were perceived. This is regarding the five-foot rear setbacks that apply to all of the, all of the lots throughout town in the RS zone. And so that is it for my staff presentation.
Thank you Karen. Will, is there any other staff person that's going to present before I turn it over to the applicant?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I will turn the presentation over to the applicant. So whomever is going to start that presentation, proceed, please.
Thank you, hearings officer Marshall. It's Chris Kobach. Good to see you again. I'll be doing the initial presentation. Maybe all of it. We'll see how it goes. To begin with, we're only going to talk about a couple of issues. I think Karen's staff report revealed that as far as most of the criteria go, there's been a lot of dialogue between staff and the applicant consultants. And there aren't very many issues. The applicants accepted, made revisions and then, and then accepted conditions suggested by staff in the recommendation, except for a couple. And so our presentation today, like, like it's been on some of the other matters we've had before you, really going to be limited to our analysis on certain conditions and why we feel the recommended conditions are not appropriate, not lawful and should not be imposed. So the first one I'll talk about is recommended condition 20. It's the sanitary sewer. It's, we've got two prongs here. First, the condition does require an analysis. But I disagree with staff that, that that makes it okay because the analysis that staff wants is leading to a upgrade of their system, provided that the analysis is not accepted by staff. So the condition really, as I read it, is we want you to upgrade our system if it needs upgrading. And that's where the applicant has the problem. The criteria this condition arises under is 4.3.400E4, I believe. And, and what that criterion requires is that the applicant demonstrate that public facilities have capacity as determined by the city to serve the proposed development. And when we looked at the sewer, there was no dispute that the majestic lift station has the raw capacity to serve. What, what staff in the staff in the recommendations and even in the draft decision, which we've submitted as part of our evidence, discusses with respect to this lift station is the way it was constructed, it doesn't have all of the features that the city may want now. For example, it doesn't have an onsite emergency generator. And, and that affects the emergency time. And it doesn't have the pumps that the, that the city may want it to have right now, if it were to build it right now. We look at that as those are existing circumstances, existing construction that the city used when it put in that lift station. It doesn't really go to the raw capacity. If you look at the, the city standard on this in 3.4.400D, I think that's really telling because that's, that's the only city standard that, that the staff recommendation points to, the only specific standard. And it talks about adequate capacity. And if you read it, it says that the city cannot deny or cannot restrict development unless there's a deficiency that cannot be rectified and if not rectified, will result in a threat to the public health, safety, surcharge of the existing mains. So the way we look at it, if you apply that provision, the city staff in the, in the, in the recommendations has not made a single finding that there will be a threat to the public health if these technical issues with regard to that pump station are not addressed by the applicant. And we think short of that type of finding, the city's own code does not allow it to restrict or deny our development based on that issue. And I think this does kind of get into then a little bit of the exaction law because as we, we've discussed in prior proceedings under this, Brown versus City of Medford case, our court of appeals was pretty clear that identifying legitimate governmental interests related to offsite improvements is the first step, but it's not the only step. What the local government has to do in order to exact improvements now under the Coons case is they have to show that that legitimate governmental interest will be impeded by impacts of the development. And if, so they have to actually find a impact that would allow them to deny the application. And only then can the local government come in and say, to avoid denial, you can mitigate the impact and you can mitigate the impact and give us some property or improvements. Now, given 3.4400D and the lack of a finding that there will be a threat to public health, safety, or surcharge the system absent these upgrades, the code says that the city cannot restrict development. And the way we interpret that mean is they cannot deny this application. And if they cannot deny it under their code, then there is no legal basis to require these upgrades to the system, absent a finding that there isn't raw capacity. We submitted written, written testimony as well today that you'll have to, to review when you're deciding these issues. And we also go through the, the interpretive analysis for the underlying requirements in BDC 4.3300E4. And, and the way we, we believe that has to be interpreted is it really only requires the applicant to show raw capacity. And I think it kind of dovetails with the provision I was just talking about. What, what the city's looking at in their code, when you read 4.3300 and 3.4400 together, I think, is to satisfy the subdivision requirement in 43300, all you have to do as an applicant is show the capacity. And then absent some public safety issue, that's it. City can't require you to do any more. And, and one example we pointed out in writing of, of how that interpretation, one, it's, it's the plain text, it just says capacity. The plain text of the subdivision provision 4.3300 doesn't go on to say, the applicant must show that there's capacity and the public facilities meet all current standards. That would require the hearings officer to add significant text to that provision to interpret it the way we believe this condition operates or could operate as it's written. So we think if you apply the, the plain language of the provision and not insert language that's not there, the 4.3300E4 is purely limited to capacity. And in regardless of whether the, the, there are other bells and whistles or upgrades that the city may want, there isn't a basis to deny. And therefore, there's not a basis to exact those types of upgrades from, from an applicant, provided there's capacity. Notwithstanding all of that, we did, we did provide an additional analysis, Grant Hargrave. It's attached to my letter. And, and what Mr. Hargrave did is he looked at the capacity, the emergency time and the pump capacity for between 91 and 107 lots in our development. Now, the original analysis was 91. Mr. Hargrave was a little more conservative here because during final design, you know, the number of lots that actually may go to Majestic Station may vary a little bit. So we went up to the maximum at 107. We did add for the analysis, those two lots in the other condition, in the neighboring subdivision. And as I explained in my letter in a footnote, we think that condition is clearly unlawful. There's no impact from this development that require those two lots to connect. The applicant really shouldn't have to spend their money to connect those lots. But given the context of this case and, and the other issues that we think are, are a little bit more heavy, the applicants accepted that condition, so we've added those two lots in. So based on this 109 total analysis, Mr. Hargrave's report concludes there's more than sufficient capacity. The emergency time meets the state regulation. And I'll tell you why we used only the state regulation. I, I think the condition, if you read it, the city was saying, you have to satisfy emergency time based on either the state regulations or the city requirements, whichever is more stringent. At least that's what they said in the, in the tentative or preliminary decision, draft decision. Now, as we point out in our letter, the city doesn't have a standard for emergency time. The city standard, the code just, I read the code, it's in 3.4400, that's all it says. If you go to the city sewer specifications for emergency time, all it states is that the city will analyze it on a case-by-case basis. There's no standard. So absent any clear and objective standard in the city regulations, we use the state regulations, which are object. Mr. Hargrave explains what their requirement for emergency time is when you do not have an onsite generator, backup source of power. And he concluded that this facility will meet that emergency time. We don't think the city can use its day-by-day analysis because that's not clear and objective. And we believe this development does fall under 197307 because it is needed housing. So we don't believe the city can rely on these subjective case-by-case analysis because there's no constraints. There is absolutely no objectivity to them at all. So Mr. Hargrave used the state regulations. And in the report that you'll read, he concluded that the state regulations for emergency time have been satisfied. And then Mr. Hargrave went on to analyze these pumps, these submersible pumps. And with our proposed development, there will be 112 gallons per minute of flow to the station. And those pumps, based on Mr. Hargrave's analysis, have capacity for, I think, 288 gallons per minute. So we believe we've demonstrated from a, from a technical standpoint that the pumps have almost double the capacity for what flow is going into them with the development. So the way we concluded this section in our written material is whether you agree with our interpretive analysis and limit your, now, your decision to whether there's raw capacity under 4.3300 or whether you consider the new report and allow staff to require that analysis. We've given you the analysis that, that shows that, that there are no upgrades required to the facility. And therefore, the condition would not be appropriate to, to impose. Transportation, the only issue we have with transportation is the condition requiring the upgrade to that intersection or the change to the existing intersection. And this really does get into, it's really purely an exaction analysis. We start by, by looking at kind of where the city starts from on here. And, and clearly, it's not based upon, it, it's an exaction, let's start there. It's an offsite improvement. And under the case law, we've explained that now, under the current law, if the city requires somebody to spend money on offsite public improvements, it's a, it's an exaction of property, just as if they're requiring real property. So it is an exaction and it's subject to the heightened scrutiny under Nolan and Dolan and, and some of our state lockings. So we look at the first point, which is the essential nexus. City's got established, one, legitimate governmental interest. It's got established that the exaction furthers that legitimate governmental interest. And then third, and critically, it has to show that there are project impacts that substantially impede that legitimate interest to the point where the city can deny the application. And again, getting back to what I just talked about earlier on the sewer, only if the city can have that finding substantially impeding to the point where they can deny, can the city start looking at mitigation. Now, if you look at the discussion in the draft decision, which we've submitted, the CAMs and the recommendations that, that the city came out with about a week ago, it's very obvious that the city has a desire, based on existing traffic flows, to reconfigure that intersection. The city is very clear, based on existing patterns, it believes more traffic goes up Boyd, therefore Boyd should be the through movement. But that is not an impact created by the development, that's just an existing circumstance. The city, I think it's interesting that if you look at the code, there's one provision the city didn't apply, and I think it's telling. In 3.4200 is a section where the city looks at what improvements it can require to adjacent streets. Now, this intersection, if you look at the site plan, that intersection is adjacent to the development. But the city did not require the improvements under that section. And I think if you read that section, it'll explain why. The city code only allows the city purportedly to exact improvements to adjacent streets if they need to be improved in accordance with the TSP or provisions, other provisions in this code. Now, what we've demonstrated is neither the TSP nor the refinement plan show this reconfigured intersection. How it's operating is exactly how it's depicted on all the adopted plans. So it, it seems to me that the city couldn't apply the basic provision, BDC 3.4200, to an adjacent intersection because these improvements that they want, they're not shown on any plan. So then the city goes back down to 4.7. And 4.7 is the transportation impact section. And it starts out by requiring a facilities report. And based on the facilities report, the city will either require a transportation impact statement or not. In this case, they accepted the, the facilities report required at TIA and the applicant provided it TIA. And the applicant went through in, in 4.7400 tells you everything you got to look at in a, in a TIA. And in this case, the Translight went through and applied all of that objective criteria. It looks at capacity at the intersection. It looks at function, turning movements, delay times, and it, and significantly, it looks at safety. Those are all of the things the city require in a TIA. And Mr. Besmer did all of that. And he concluded that the intersection meets all of them. There is no delay, there's plenty of capacity before and after. And significantly, in the study period, there was not a single, zero accidents at the intersection. So there is not an identified safety issue on that intersection. Notwithstanding that objective information, the city came back and said, we still want you to do this improvement, this offsite improvement because we think that intersection should function a certain way. And in the recommendations, the city has come out and now and tried to, in my, in my view, tried to conjure up some kind of impact analysis. But all they've really done, if you read their information, and this is on, I've set forth some of their findings or, or statements on page eight of our letter, is they've talked about what interests they have in that intersection. They think the, the, the first one is they want to require the modification because they believe Boyd Acres is more of a collector road than Morningstar. And Morningstar is more of a local street. Whether that's true or not, and I'm going to talk about that a little bit, that's not a project impact. That's an existing circumstance. It may be that Boyd Acres operates differently. But it operated differently before and it will operate differently the same, it will operate the same way after the development. The, the, the city cannot point to any project impact that impedes an interest. They show that more vehicles go north on Boyd than go east on Morningstar. Again, that, whether that's true or not, that's an existing circumstance. That's just where traffic is going, that's not a project impact. And then they point out that the existing right-of-way on Boyd lends itself more to the through movement than Morningstar. Again, that's just an existing circumstance, it's, it's the existing right-of-way, it's not a project impact. So if you read the staff recommendations, I think you'll have to agree, there's not one project impact that the city can identify that, that impedes the operation of that intersection. Again, there's nothing that contradicts Mr. Besmer's conclusions that the intersection currently meets all of the objective criteria for how intersections are to function. The turning movements, the delay, the safety, all of that's met before and after the project. Now, there's a couple of arguments the city makes about, one is kind of interesting. They say, well, because we have a different design standard for Boyd than Morningstar, it's, it's a higher grade street. What they're referring to is in the refinement plan, there's a, there's a slightly different road design for Boyd than for Morningstar. It has 28 feet of pavement, I believe, bike lanes and sidewalks. Whereas Morningstar has, shows 32 feet of asphalt and sidewalks, doesn't show bike lanes. So they say, well, because the design is different, that's a higher order street. Well, there's two points about that. One is if that's the legitimate governmental interest and it's been triggered in this case, well, the city would have then required the applicant to redesign Boyd and reconstruct it to meet those standards. But they didn't, they're only requiring this intersection improvement. I think that shows that this road design is just a contrived reason to try to get these improvements from the applicant. If, if the legitimate governmental interest was impacted by this development and the legitimate governmental interest is that road design, the city would be pushing for that, those improvements along Boyd Acres, not just at the intersection. The other important thing you have to remember is that there's nothing about the project or even the redesign of the intersection that prohibit or impede the city from doing that road design. The city doesn't explain, they say, we have this legitimate interest in having this road design on Boyd with, that's different than Morningstar. Well, that may, even if that's true, that the city can do that road design without redoing the intersection. There's nothing that stops them from putting in the same improvements throughout the intersection on their own nickel. And interestingly, the, the transportation SDCs in this case are over a million dollars. So not only is the city gonna, are, are they asking the applicant to pay over a million dollars in transportation SDCs? They want them to pay to do this offsite improvement just because the city feels that design is better. Well, as I said, the design is not an impact. And there's nothing that impedes the city from doing it, nothing about the project. Equally important, this whole argument about road design, our Court of Appeals rejected it squarely in the Dan Hill case. I've explained this before and I'll, I'll go through it again, is that in, in the Dan Hill case, what the city wanted to do is they said, we, we can't identify impacts necessarily, but we have this road standard and that road is classified as such and such road. And based on that classification, our code says we need more right-of-way. So we're going to take right-of-way from you, Mr. Hill. And the Court of Appeals corrected the city and said, wait a minute, that's not how the essential nexus works. Is, one, your standards cannot remove the impact analysis. You can have standards and they may be legitimate, but you still have to go through and show that there are project impacts that impede that interest to the point you can deny the application. And in that case, Hill, just like this case, the local government was unable to demonstrate that there was any project impact that substantially impeded the interest that the government was projecting. And same thing, same thing here is that if you read the recommendations, the draft decision, everything, the city has not said, well, the, the project's going to generate additional traffic to the point where that intersection is unsafe. It's going to generate traffic to the point where the intersection, as currently designed, has delay time. Or that the intersection as designed and built now is going to lap capacity. So none of, none of those findings were there and they're critical under the Court of Appeals decision in Hill, they, they are mandatory to exact property. The, finally, the city talks about this being a priority pedestrian area. I don't, I didn't see anything where they specifically had a, a, a document, a city document that said that there are any priority pedestrian routes in the area. But, but they interject this concept here. Well, two things, one, again, no evidence that the project is going to impede pedestrian connections. In fact, if you look at the site plan, the, the proposal does significant improvement to pedestrian connections. Street B goes up to Carley, there are sidewalks to the north. Peale Street goes up to Morningstar. And Morningstar, if you, if you actually look at the improvements on Morningstar, it's really built closer to a collector than Boyd because it currently has 36 feet of pavement and it has sidewalks on both sides for most of the way. The only thing it lacks is all bike lanes, it has some limited bike lane, but, but that's the only thing it lacks. It has sidewalks. So in, in the, the frontage improvement on Morningstar, as it's adjacent to the development, that'll have new sidewalks. So all of the internal streets, including the, the cul-de-sac, because it has to have that pedestrian connection, they're all going to connect to Morningstar, which has sidewalks. And those sidewalks are on both sides, so pedestrians can get to, to sidewalks on the north side of Morningstar. Those connect to Boyd, to the, then Boyd has sidewalks going north. So this, this project actually facilitates pedestrian connections rather than impedes them. And, and to exact this property, the city has And to exact this property, the city has to show that the project substantially impedes those connections. Again, there's just no evidence of that. I think that, I think, you know, that really kind of covers what I wanted to say on the two conditions. I just sum it up by saying, I think the sewers are a clear case where our report shows that it's got capacity and it meets standards. I think we only have to show capacity on streets. The recommendation and the evidence the city put in is just utterly lacking of any impacts that would impede this interest. It's clear, city wants the intersection reconstructed based on existing circumstances. That's fine. It's got over a million dollars in SDCs it can use to do that. It just, under the law, it just cannot require this applicant to pay for that public project that it desires. So unless there are questions, that'll be my presentation. If, I don't have any need to have Mr. Hargrave or Mr. Besmer talk, but if you have questions about the sewer analysis, Mr. Hargrave is by far more knowledgeable about that than
Thank you, Mr. Kovak. I don't have any questions at this point. I have not reviewed yet the submission that you mentioned was put in recently. So I don't have any, any questions at this point regarding the analysis. I appreciate your detailed addressing of the issues from the applicant's standpoint. So I guess at this point, if there's no one else on the applicant's team that will be speaking, we will turn it over to public testimony. Thank you.
And Ms. Marshall, are you looking for just general testimony or in favor, opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, you are muted.
So sorry. Well, typically, you know, we can do it with testimony in support, testimony in opposition, neutral testimony. But if there's anyone that wishes to testify at this point, I think we'll just go ahead and open it up. I do know that there are a number of participants on the line and/or on this platform, but perhaps we'll see what they have to say.
All right, wonderful. Any time limits?
Oh, I typically do not impose time limits unless we get repetitive testimony, you know, person after person saying, basically, I agree with everything this person just said, and I'm going to say it again. I'm just asking participants to be mindful of repetitive testimony. And if there are written submittals, I also request that, that that information not be read into the record. I will have access, and I do have access to everything that's been submitted. And if there is an open record period following the close of this public hearing, everything that is submitted will be reviewed by me. So those are my, those are my general parameters for public testimony, but no time limit.
Great, thank you so much. So at this point, I'll repeat the instructions for those of you who are joining us in WebEx. Please open the participants' view. Look for the, for the hand icon on the bottom right-hand corner of your screen or of the participants pane. Click on that if you'd like to provide public testimony at this time, and we'll be calling on your name based on the order that we receive the raised hands. If you are joining us by phone, we ask that you use the keypad on your telephone, and please use or press the star key followed by the number three to raise your hand. When we call on you, you'll hear two beeps, and that will signal that we have unmuted your microphone. So at this point, we have a couple participants. So if it's okay with you, officer, I'm going to call on, and I'm sorry, I'm going to have to expand my view here because I can see the whole last name, but it's James, James Buchman. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll hear two beeps. Go ahead, James.
Yes, hello, this is James Bushman. And I have been a representative for Boyd Acres Neighborhood Association. And then I have also sent in comments. But I'm here today to, again, talk about a few things, a few concerns that are ongoing and that we continue to hear concerns from the neighborhood on. A primary one is the amount of traffic being projected to utilize Peel Street onto Sierra Drive from this development. And per the traffic analysis, that could account for 54% of the development volumes when it is completed. And there's considerable desire to make a direct western connection through to Boyd Acres via Town Drive or Silas Drive. And could you comment on this and how that might come about in the future? The people, especially on Sierra Drive, are very concerned with traffic volumes currently, and they think this would aggravate it considerably.
Thank you, James. What I'm going to suggest we do is that we'll have, hopefully, the applicant and his representatives will, will take notes and add that as a question. And once we get through public testimony, there will be a rebuttal time for the applicant to address public comments. So I will ask that their question, that your question be answered at that time. Was there anything further that you wanted to add to your testimony today?
There are a couple more items. The residents of Wishingwell are also concerned about traffic on Town Drive, which is a private street maintained by that subdivision. They're, in particular, they're concerned about utilization of that street during construction activities and the possible damage that could come from that. Also, they would welcome and help on the future maintenance costs of that private street caused by either the construction or the future use of that street by residents in that area. So that's a consideration on those people's part, and also a consideration on being a good neighbor. So. Would you like me to go on to point number three?
Yes, please.
Point number three involves a power line easement and the setback requirements that will be caused by that easement for the lots on the south boundary there. What are, why does that easement? What effects will it have on the setbacks of the residents that'll be constructed there? And will that cause the footprints for those houses to be up against the south boundary to a minimum? And if that is the case, would there be consideration about doing smaller footprints or larger lots so that there could be one-story houses there? And do not push everything immediately up to the fence line or the boundary line there? It's a concern to those people. We keep hearing that. My next point would be screening and fencing adjacent to the surrounding properties as, what screening requirements and what fencing requirements, or what anticipated development improvements would go on there to separate those properties or to screen those properties from the other surrounding properties? I don't know if the plans have gotten that far along, but there is a consideration there. Likewise, there's consideration on the architecture style and design quality, and whether there are profiles to look at and to determine the quality of the housing and has a development contractor been, been selected. And so, you know, their quality can be examined. Also, is there anticipation for CCNRs within this development? And will there be a HOA to enforce, to enforce those? And finally, some refinement or determination of the construction dates and the phasing timeframes would be greatly appreciated. So besides that, I think the rest of things have been answered and are probably less critical concerns. Thank you for my time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your testimony and your questions. After we complete the public testimony, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we'll have the applicant address your questions. And as I've mentioned several times, you know, if there's a request by any participant or the applicant for an open record period to perhaps address these questions in more detail, if they determine that that's necessary, then we can bring that up at the end as well. Okay, so again, thank you. Juan, is there another person that will be presenting testimony?
Yes, thank you. We have Susan Whitmore. Susan, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed with your comment.
Okay, thank you. My name is Susan Whitmore. I am the HOA Secretary for Wishingwell Neighborhood, the neighborhood directly to the east of the proposed subdivision. And I'm going to reiterate here several concerns that we have previously submitted. And as Jim Bushman has pointed out, we're hoping that the developers can be good neighbors for us and consider here some of our concerns, address some of our concerns. We continue to be concerned about the increase of residential and construction traffic this proposal will bring to our private drive streets. Since we are responsible for maintenance of these streets, we will be negatively impacted by this increase of traffic in our neighborhood. We acknowledge that there is a public access easement on our streets, but this issue continues to be a problem for a lot of neighborhoods in Bend when developers are able to use private streets as assets to win approval for their applications. And I would like to state for the public record that this continues to be a problem, even though on paper and in Bend Development Code, it's allowed. Also, this development will result in substantial and significant increase of traffic on Morning Star Drive, and as Jim pointed out, also on Peel Drive and Sierra Drive. So as a possible mitigation to this, we support the proposed improvements to the intersection as outlined in the staff recommendations of intersection on Boyd Acres and Morning Star. This development, the density of the development will increase the population of the area, and we feel like it would be a great asset to our local community to improve pedestrian and bike traffic possibilities as well. The Bend Parks and Recreation District expressed interest in the dedication of a small corner of land on southeast corner of the property to augment the adjoining natural area of Boyd Park. And even though this property does not require a master plan, we were hoping that this, that either they could include a open space in their plan or increase the area of Boyd Park in light of the density of this proposed development and the ensuing increase in parking users, this seems warranted. And lastly, staff recommendations also designated all trees and vegetation to be removed. And I would like to submit a request to consider retaining any vegetation and trees where possible, such as along lot lines or property lines. This will help to preserve the livability of our neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Juan, is there another person that wishes to testify?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have Claude Simmons. Claude, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed with your testimony.
Yeah, Claude Simmons, I live at 2068 Sierra Drive. And the question I have is, looking at the lot sizes of the properties that are the very southern boundary of the proposed development, which abut the power line, there are two lots that are, look very small. I don't know if they meet the 4,000 square foot area. The lot I live in is the corner lot at the corner of Peel and Sierra, which is an 11,000 square foot lot. And it looks like they're actually going to have not one but two houses behind my house. And then five houses down will be another small lot that borders the lot line. And I just, I can't read on your diagram, the lot size of those proposed houses.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Again, we'll have the applicant address all questions presented during public testimony. So we'll have him address the lot size questions that you have, and especially as those lots that abut the lot that you own or the property that you own. Did you have further testimony or questions that you wish to present?
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Benjamin Colley. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, Benjamin. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed with your public testimony.
All right, can you guys hear me okay? All right. Yeah, my name's Benjamin Colley. I am also a neighbor to the property in question. Live at 20650 Sierra Drive. And so my backyard, my family's backyard would neighbor the new development there. And I've raised this question in the public comments in the past, and many of our neighbors have as well. Due to the power line, existing power lines that will kind of run along Town Drive, there's going to be a 20-foot setback from those power lines, which is going to require those houses to be built way up back against the back fence. We're aware there's a five-foot minimum setback required by code, but we'd like to, as you can see just by walking around the neighborhood, there's no, there's nowhere in the existing neighborhood anywhere around where you can find a house that's five feet from its back fence. And especially with the very small lot sizes of the new neighborhood, we're fully expecting that even though lot plans haven't been developed, that those new houses are going to be two-story houses, which will be five feet from our back fence. And additionally, since there's actually going to be two houses neighboring our back fence, we, we, we'd like to ask the developer or the owner, excuse me, in the interest of being a good neighbor, if they would consider or have considered perhaps building those to be one-story houses or alleviating that concern in some other way. And I'm really speaking in, for all of our neighbors on the north side of Sierra, I believe there's eight of us, I've spoken with almost every single one of those neighbors, and we all have voiced the same concerns too during the public comments period. And we just like to find out what the owner of the property thinks of that. And that's all I have. Thank you. And we'd just like to find out what the owner of the property thinks of that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Benjamin. Okay, Juan, the next participant, please.
Yes, thank you. Next, we have Skip Harvey. Skip, I'm going to go ahead and unmute your microphone. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed with your testimony. Skip, go ahead. Oh, never mind, he's gone. Maybe it was an accident raising the hand. I am not seeing any other hands. Here, we see a couple more now. I have Lynn Peterson. Lynn, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Go ahead. You'll hear two beeps. Proceed, please. Lynn, go ahead. Lynn Peterson, I have unmuted your microphone. All right, maybe we can come back to Lynn. I have Emily O'Neil. Emily, go ahead and you'll hear two beeps. Please proceed. You are unmuted now, Emily.
Hi there. Yes, my name's Emily O'Neil and I live in the Wishing Well subdivision on Wishing Well Court. My concerns were largely echoed by HOA secretary. So thank you very much, Susan, for representing all of us here in Wishing Well. Additionally, to everything that she said, I think my concerns come down to the fact that that space, just as a whole, has been used over the course as a recreation area for our community. So I do understand that there is no requirement by the developer to add any level of park system. But again, in the effort of being a good neighbor and knowing what your neighbors to all sides have been using that space for, it seems imperative that you would add a park in some capacity to that space. My additional concern is the fact that Town Drive is a park drive. And I do know that this has been mentioned a couple times. But for our HOA, we are required for not just the maintenance of that road, but also the snow removal of that road. And so I would like to know that there was some sort of system in place for our winter months and snow removal, knowing that that would fall entirely on the HOA unless something is addressed. So those are my two main concerns that I wanted to share.
Thank you, Emily. We'll have the applicant address your questions at the conclusion of public testimony. Juan, have you been able to locate Skip or Lynn?
We do have one more. We have Kay McGrath. So I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, Kay. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed with your testimony.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Okay. On behalf of the other Sierra Drive participants, they have already voiced our concerns. We live right north and right adjacent to the new development, just right near Peel Drive. And I just want to find out, when do you anticipate we'll be getting our answers and concerns answered from the applicant?
This is Stephanie, the hearings officer. Well, that's a good question. The applicant can address those questions today. If they wish, they can ask for more time, which would be what we would call an extension of the public record. So the record would be left open. We would not reconvene for another hearing, but that would be up to the applicant as to how they wish to address the questions today. Did you have any other testimony that you wish to present?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and one more time, I'm going to try Lynn Peterson. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll hear two beeps. Lynn, are you there? Lynn? All right, we'll go. It looks like Susan Whitwer. Are you, I've just unmuted you.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just received a call from Skip Harvey and he is not able to get his microphone to work. And so he wanted me to submit a comment from him. He lives on the very end of Town Drive on the north side of the street. And he's concerned about, again, the five-foot setback, the lots, that five-foot setback requirement on the lots that would, about his property. And he's concerned that there are five lots planned to be developed right along his property line and that there's only a five-foot setback. And so he wanted me to submit that comment and concern. And it sounds very similar to the ones that have been submitted from the residents along Sierra Drive.
Thank you. Thank you, Susan, and thank you for conveying Skip's concerns as well. Juan, do we have any other participants?
At this point, I only see the same ones. What I'm going to go ahead and is, I'm going to go ahead and clear all the hands. And I'm going to ask if there's anybody else who wants to provide testimony to go ahead and raise your hand. And I'll remind the person on the phone, if you like to do it, please press, use your telephone keypad and press the star key followed by the number three. And Lynn is back. Let's see, Lynn. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. And you are unmuted now, Lynn. I'm not sure if you're having issues with your microphone. Maybe that's why. You can also, one second here. Can I get my meeting information? If you like, you can also call this phone number 1-855-282-6330. And you can enter, just a moment. The following access code, 1465954933, followed by the pound sign two times. So again, that access code is 1465954933, pound, pound. I will repeat that phone number, 1-855-282-6330. Then once you connect, you can press the star key followed by the number three. In the meantime, I see James Bushman one more time. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. You'll hear two beeps. Please proceed, James.
Yes, this is James Bushman again. I'd just like to make sure that the access to Boyd Park is secure. I know that the Bend Parks and Recreation Department has indicated they think their property lines are about Town Drive in a significant way, so they could at least get a trail in there. But if there's any obstacles to that or any difficult access, I would definitely encourage the developer to make sure that that access is appropriate in grade and location and appearance. Because it will be a large attractant to sell their property. So I would encourage them to make sure that that is appropriate, even if it requires a little bit of an easement to make that a good connection. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bushman. Okay, still waiting to see if my notes say Lynn Peterson or any other person that raised their hand, if we've been able to get them connected.
I do have one new phone number. I see 541390. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you again. You'll hear two beeps. I'm not sure if this is Lynn. Yes. Oh, hi Lynn. So glad you were able to connect. Please go ahead with your testimony.
Sorry about that. My microphone wasn't connected.
And I'm sorry, we can ask you to speed up a little bit? Lynn, are you there? It's really hard to hear you.
I don't know how to, could you call me at that number?
Actually, that's better. We can hear you now.
Oh, good. What I concern is the tree removal because a juniper abuts my property and my lot is built up. So if that tree were to be removed, it would destroy the integrity of my lot, my patio, probably the home. So I did, I have communicated with Karen Swenson and she assured me that my tree is not scheduled to be removed. I do have a tall fence. When will they start the tree removal? And will they clear cut the entire area at the same time? How do I make sure that my tree is not removed? Basically, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We'll have the applicant address your questions. Did you have any other testimony or questions today?
You know, I just wanted to say I'm at 20658 Sierra Drive and the two lots that are scheduled to be built behind me are 126 and 127.
Okay, thank you. Juan, do we have, excuse me, do we have any other participants?
At this point, I'm not seeing anybody else willing or wishing to provide testimony by raising their hand.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for helping us with that process. Okay, well, at this point, it's, we shift back to the applicant for rebuttal. And as anyone who's been online through this process has heard, there have been a number of questions that members of the public have asked. The applicant can certainly address all of those now or could make a request and/or could make a request to leave the record open. So I will turn it back over to Mr. Kobak on behalf of the applicant.
Good morning again. I could be corrected, but in the past, didn't we go last after staff came back on? I think the way we've done it in the past, staff will come back and then we get the final word since we're the applicant.
Correct. You do have the burden of proof. Yeah, thank you. How about?
I just wanted to add that maybe staff, I thought, we'll try to address some of these comments, but I think some of them maybe staff might have some important information on.
Sure, yes. Great. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kobak. Ms. Swenson, we'll start with you, please.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. So one item that I just want to address right now, while all the applicants are asking, all of the members of the public are listening, in order to receive a notice of decision, we will need your email address. And I do not have an email address for Emily O'Neil or Lynn Peterson. So if those two individuals could email me at kswenson, that's K-S-W-E-N-S-O-N at bendorgan.gov, and that's all one word, bendorgan.gov, then I can add them to the mailing list. Most of the issues raised by the members of the public are addressed in the staff report in detail. That the question about the setbacks from the power line easement, it is approximately 20 feet. That easement extends about 20 feet into those lots. Garages must be set back 20 feet from that property line. So at least the garage will be set back that far anyway. In a typical lot, the living space could be farther forward than that. It could be 10 feet from the property line. So it's the living space of those homes that would be impacted. But as I mentioned before, that five-foot rear setback is standard across the RS zone throughout the entire city. And so I think the individuals were asking the applicant about how those homes could be sized so it would not go right up to that five-foot setback. Also, I just wanted to touch on, I noted in my presentation about a floor area ratio that affected most of the eastern lot. For the members of the public, I just wanted to describe what that is. I failed to do that. That floor area ratio is the maximum size that a home can be in relation to the size of a lot. So if the lot is 4,000 square feet, which many of these along the eastern property line are, with a floor area ratio of 0.6 or 60%, then the maximum floor area for the entire home would be 2,400 square feet. And so if it was a 200, excuse me, if it was a two-story home with same size upstairs and downstairs, then the footprint would be 1,200 square feet. So I just wanted to clarify how that calculation is applied. I also looked up Claude Simmons' lot that's on, abuts Peel Street, just south of the proposed subdivision, and his lot abuts Lot 38 and 81. Lot 38 at the southwest corner of Peel Street and Town Drive is 8,726 square feet. And then Lot 81 is the minimum 4,000 square feet. The other issues, tree removal, there are a few trees, as one individual noted that I talked to that person about. Some, very few trees that are proposed to be retained along the southern property line. And if shown in this grading plan that's approved under the tentative plan, then the grading plan that is subsequently submitted must be consistent. So there should be no changes between the tentative plan approval for tree removal and then the grading plan. The only exception to this is if they're out in the field at a later date and those trees are determined to be dead or diseased, then there is an exception in the code for safety for those to be removed. I think that was most of the other ones that would require a specific response other than what is noted in the staff report. I want to respond to a few items from the applicant. The applicant submitted a 20, let's see, a 26-page document to staff nine minutes before this public hearing. So I have not had a chance to forward that to you. So I have not had a chance to forward that to you, Hearing Officer Marshall. I will do so immediately following this meeting. I literally just scrolled through the document. I have not read it. It does include an analysis that the applicant referred to that is dated November 12th. So that was on Thursday. So my assumption is that is a response to the condition that we discussed during this public hearing and as a response to the condition of approval. As a point of record, they also are submitting the draft administrative decision as part of the record. That was a courtesy draft provided to the applicant prior to issuance of the administrative decision. That is not a issued decision. And after that, that review, the applicant decided to request a, that the applicant be elevated, application be elevated to a type, to a public hearing, because they indicated that they would either request a public hearing now or appeal the administrative decision on these, the items raised today. We, the staff did modify the condition about the lift station. And as I mentioned, they submitted this report in response. Obviously, we've not had a chance to review it. So we do a staff request that the, that the public record be kept open, the written record be kept open. Then, just two items of note, the applicant mentioned that staff did not note in 3.4.200, and then the subsection is A1, about compliance with the standards set forth in that section, that staff only referred to 4.7. That section itself, as he noted, is, mentions compliance with the TSP provisions of this chapter and other pertinent sections of this code. And the finding indicates that, that the planned improvements conform to the TSP and other applicable sections of the code as conditioned in this decision. So with fulfillment of the conditions, then it would be compliant. So that, it was referenced in 3.4. And so I just wanted to note that. Also, the applicant has been referring to the intersection of Boyd Acres and Morning Star as an off-site improvement. This intersection is abutting the subject property. The applicant noted that, why wasn't the other areas of Boyd Acres required to be improved? Other areas of Boyd Acres, Boyd Acres Road do not abut this property, only the intersection does. And so this is a, an abutting frontage that happens to be an intersection. Also, regarding the designation of Boyd Acres Road, the, as you may or may not be aware, the TSP was recently updated. And I conferred with the Streets Division and the Growth Management Division about their discussions about Boyd Acres Road during that TSP update process. And that, the fact that Boyd Acres Road is a minor arterial south of Empire, but remains in its current classification north of Empire Avenue. And I inquired what discussion took place as part of the TSP update. And they indicated because of the Lava Ridge refinement plan specifying specific cross-section involving bike lanes for Boyd Acres Road, they chose not to elevate that road to Collector Street, that they wanted to rely on the Lava Ridge refinement plan for that cross-section. And at this point, that is all of my comments, unless other city staff, Chris Hennington is online, as well as Colin Stevens and Ian Leithizer, if they have any comments, they can do so now.
Yeah, this is Chris Hennington from the Cities Engineering Department. I want to reiterate kind of what Karen said. We have not had the ability to review the pump station criteria or the analysis performed by HWA. That's something that we will do probably today after we get off this meeting and hopefully be able to get back to you and, and the applicant on what we're looking at. Essentially, what we're looking at and what is allowed under our design standards is just that we're looking at state regulations, the DEQ requirements, to figure out whether or not the existing infrastructure that is there is in conformance with DEQ requirements, whether or not there's enough emergency time with the available storages in those existing tanks. The, the response that we heard was the requirement to install a generator. A generator would be required if there is not sufficient space allotted within the existing wells. The generator essentially acts as a backup system to allow the city staff to respond during an outage or a malfunction, not as a, as a permanent fix to, to an existing failure. So that is something that we're going to be looking at when we do that review. I would, in terms of the Morning Star and Boyd Acres intersection, it was very, very clear in that the TIA presented by the Transportation Engineer during his, his review, that there was an issue with that particular intersection. I'll read you an insert here. Review of the operations analysis shows that with buildup of the site with a new southbound approach and removal of the separate southbound, southbound right turn lane, provided negligible change in intersection delays. However, this will allow the intersection to be reconstructed, reconstructed with tighter curbed radii, a narrower pedestrian crossing distance, and will encourage lower residential speeds. It is recommended that this reconstruction occur with the site development and with the modification, that the new southbound approach can be better aligned. The, the design that was provided during the TIA is different than what the city is noting, only in that we are trying to further realign the intersection to better the connectivity of the bikes and the pedestrians through the corridor, while maintaining exactly what the Transportation Engineer suggested, reducing those, those crossing lengths and reducing the speeds. I believe that what the city is asking for is fair and is in line with exactly what the Transportation Engineer recommended. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Colin or Ian, anyone else from the city wish to provide rebuttal testimony or address issues that have come up? Okay, well, then we will turn it back to Mr. Kobak.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with staff's comments. And first, the draft decision, we realized it was draft, but you know how this works is we, that's all we had to start our letter that we submitted this morning. So I started writing with the draft decision. And I thought it was important because it does have a lot of staff's thought process and findings. And then, and then the staff report was supposed to be out Monday, but I think as the Hearing Officer was alerted to, there was a little bit of a technical delay and we pointed it out to staff. So we didn't get that until Tuesday, the recommendations. And then Mr. Hargrave had to do his analysis and that came in on the 12th. And, you know, and then I had to finish the letter. So I left the stuff on the draft decision because I think it's relevant. We realize it's a draft, but it does supplement the recommendations. And, you know, it takes, takes me a little longer to work now because I had this surgery last week on my shoulder and so I'm one arm. And I don't have an assistant here at my home office. So we worked as hard as we could under the time constraints, just like city staff does. We got our letter and, you know, I was certainly expecting the city to ask for seven days to respond to it. They have in every other case. So, and this isn't a modification issue that we had last time. So I think we're, I think city staff's gonna have plenty of time to, to respond to what we put in there. As far as the TSP goes, I appreciate that staff has talked to the city about why they didn't designate Boyd differently north of Empire. I think it's utterly irrelevant legally. The fact is, the design standard does not drive the question. Under the court's clear decision in Hill, it is impacted. And what you did not hear in rebuttal from staff was any specific project impact that required that design. We're not, this project is not impeding any legitimate governmental interest in having its design. The fact that it's an adjacent street, that intersection, that's, again, a red herring. The street at issue in Hill, 122nd Drive, was adjacent to the site. So the court looked at the same exact circumstance and said, "Design standards are fine. You can have your design standards, local government. But if you want exact property, if you want to make an applicant do the improvements or give you the property, you have to do the impact analysis." Adjacency does not matter. It does, in other words, just because the street's adjacent, it doesn't give the local government a blank check to say to the applicant, "We don't have to look at impacts." That was exactly what the court decided. The, the TIA was, I'm not sure that was represented exactly correct. So Mr. Bessemer, the project traffic engineer, went through all of this functionality, all of the objective standards, and concluded that the intersection did not need to be reconstructed. It functions properly, it's entirely safe, zero accidents. What he found was there weren't enough cars making that right turn to warrant a separate right turn lane. If you read his report, that, and I know you will, that was his finding. He said, "I don't, there aren't enough cars making that right turn to warrant that separate right turn lane." And then he said, "And I think it would actually be a better intersection if we took that lane out and made it more conventional." So this is one of those where no good deed goes unpunished. The applicant volunteers to do something for the city that is an improvement, even though the objectively verifiable technical information says, "We don't have to do anything." And now the city is characterizing that as our agreement with them, that the whole intersection needs to be redesigned the way they want it. That's absolutely not true. And, and the other thing is, this, if you look at the maneuver that they're concerned about for bikes, so bikes are gonna come up Boyd Acres and then they're gonna continue north on Boyd Acres, and there will be a conflict because some cars on Boyd Acres will go east on Morning Star. That's just the nature of that intersection. Now, nothing about the improvements that the city wants changes that driving maneuver. There will still be the exact same number of cars coming up Boyd that are gonna go right on Morning Star. That conflict with bikes will always be there, regardless of these, these improvements. So their improvements, not only are there no impacts to justify, they're not advancing the safety interests that they claim that they're advancing. It will always be there. So the intersection, there may be other things the city can do with that intersection, but requiring us to rebuild it is not consistent with the law. As to the public, I'm gonna talk about a few, but I'm gonna give Greg Blackmore a warning that I'm gonna put him on, to some extent, because on some of these issues, I just, I wasn't involved in the, in the public meetings and the public outreach to the extent there was. And I did not meet with any of these people, these neighbors who have legitimate issues to talk about them. So I can only respond to a limited extent. On the amount of traffic that's gonna go in their neighborhoods, what I can tell you is, you know, the city code has provisions that we've all worked with on connectivity and extending roads out to your development. So when you develop, you're required to build your road so that they will promote future connections. Well, this is an example where some of our connections really will work, the ones that go out to Morning Star. But some of them won't be able to be completed, obviously, until a budding property develops, because we don't control it. So, for example, town can't go all the way out to Boyd because we can't build it on somebody else's property. Eventually, if the code is applied the way it is to us, and I'm sure it will be, that will, when that property develops, the city will require that road to be extended out, just like it's required us to extend our roads out. So that I can answer definitively is, under the code, the connections should be there as property develops. Town Drive, I'm not really sure I understand it, because I was reading, and again, it's, the staff report is consistent with the draft decision. And what I read is that we're required to improve Town Drive. So I, I'll ask Mr. Blackmore to talk more about that, but I thought we were, the applicant was required by the recommendations to improve Town Drive. And that's not a condition we've challenged. So to the extent they're concerned about the condition of the road, the way I read everything is it was gonna be improved. I'll talk a little bit, I'm gonna take the rest of the comments really in one category, and that's what's gonna happen on the lots in the future. All I can tell you, and I hope Mr. Blackmore can, can expand on this, is some of those are a little premature because there's no envelopes being proposed for any of these lots. And I thought Karen did a good job of letting the public know that, you know, the code has specific provisions and we've complied with them. And we'll continue to comply with them. There's residential compatibility to the extent it applies. So if there are additional setbacks that apply, the developer is committed to complying with them. And as far as how does, how houses are designed for livability, marketability, I just don't know, we're at a point where we can really commit to a specific house development on a lot that hasn't been finally platted or even sold. So I don't know that we can really do much more on that. But I will turn it over to Greg Blackmore to the extent he has any other comments that he can make in response to staff, or the neighbor comments. I thought the staff report did a good job of responding to them. And if Greg can expand on that, I'll let him do it.
Thank you, Mr. Kobak. Mr. Blackmore?
Thanks, Chris. And I don't have too much to add at this point. I agree with the comments from, from staff. I agree with the comments from Chris. Also, in regards to the traffic, I'll add what I can in regards to the traffic into the surrounding area. We also do have Joe Bessemer, who is, who's online here. We, if he wanted to expand on any of the traffic comments, impacts Peel, Sierra, et cetera, he would be the best resource to discuss those topics. But in general, we do have a comprehensive traffic analysis that is in the record that, that does document those improvements and the impacts to Peel, the impacts to Sierra and the surrounding streets do conform to all code standards. Let's see, there's one, let's see. Chris, I don't know if you wanted to jump in on any, or if you wanted to address it in writing, but there was comments related to private street and impacts to, to private streets with public improved, sorry, public access easements over them. If you wanted to take a look at the, at the, at the map and the properties along the south, there is a power line that exists in the east-west direction near the southern part of the subdivision. There's a power line easement that does encroach into, you know, in those individual lots. The lots are adequately sized. There's setback, 10-foot setback requirements on off-rund property lines and 20-foot setback for, for garages and garage doors. So, you know, the easement will also be within setback areas. The majority of the easement will be within, at least a portion of it, within setback areas. The lots are adequately sized. They're over 4,000 square feet. And so there are, the property owner and developer are experienced in design of subdivisions and have, have made sure that those lots are indeed buildable. That minor encroachment of the power line easement does not make them at all unbuildable. They're still sized such that, that homes could be built when those homes are designed and ultimately designed and developed. There was some comments about screening and fencing, again, not required and premature at this, at this particular time, as are those architectural styles and profiles. You know, the dates, I don't, I would refer to the rest of the team to talk dates. I know that this project has been, has been pushed back as we try to work with staff to address these, these issues with the sewer, the issue with the intersection. It's been ongoing conversations that have pushed this project out quite some time already. So I'm not sure where the dates are, but can look to the rest of the team to answer some of those questions. And I think that's the bulk. Like I said, staff really did address the Like I said, staff really did address the, you know, the approval criteria in, in terms of ultimate future design, future construction, or this is an application for a subdivision at this point. And to my understanding, individual, you know, home footprints and, and design styles have not been established for, for the lots. So if, if anybody else on the team has some comments about, about that, I'd be open to that. But I've not been informed of any of those, those elements of the project at this point.
You know, this is Chris Kovak, Hearing Officer Marshall. And I don't want to put words in the city's mouth, but I, I thought I heard them indicate that at least on sewer, they want to respond. So I'm assuming we're going to have a seven-day period. And rather than try to go through all of the neighbors' comments today, if we are going to have a seven-day period to submit new evidence, I think we can give the public participants a little bit more thoughtful response if we have the opportunity to do that in writing. So if you, if the city wants to confirm whether they're going to want the record open, then I think we can maybe shortcut some of this.
Thank you, Mr. Kovak. Yes, I, I did hear that statement by Karen and possibly also by Chris. So I'll ask, it looks like Karen's unmuted. So go ahead, Karen.
Yes, the staff would like the in-record extended. The applicant did via email confirm to extend the 120-day clock or suspend it for 29 days due to this request to elevate it to a public hearing. And so the 120-day clock expires January 2nd, 2021. So we do have time for the standard extension.
Thank you, Karen. That's, that's helpful. All right, so I, I agree with the, the comments that Mr. Kovak just made about it, it might be preferable for the applicant to address some of the questions that have come up today by the public in a more thorough, detailed fashion while the record is open. So I'm going to talk about what that looks like for a few minutes. And then I'll, I'll ask Ms. Swenson to comment on receipt of materials during the open record period. So at, at the end of this hearing, the public hearing will be closed. However, new evidence will still, may still be submitted during a seven-day period that will expire one week from today. That's your opportunity to submit anything new you would like the Hearing Officer to consider when I'm making my decision. Following the initial seven-day open record period, there'll be a second seven-day period during which anyone may submit rebuttal evidence to any new evidence that was submitted during the first seven days. Don't miss that first deadline if you have anything new, unless, you know, only rebuttal evidence can come in during the second seven day. And then there'll be a seven-day period. Should the applicant wish to do so, the applicant alone will have the opportunity to submit final written argument. In the past, I've had applicants elect to waive that so that, you know, I'm off to complete my decision. I'm going to look at my calendar here. And for our purposes, oh gosh. And I, I believe when I opened up the hearing today, I mentioned that it was Tuesday, November 16th. No, it's Monday, November 16th, 2020. So the first seven-day period would conclude on Monday, November 23rd, 2020. The rebuttal period would conclude on Monday, November 30th, 2020. And if the applicant wishes to submit final written argument, closing argument, that would close on December 7, 2020. I'd like Ms. Swenson to address how receipt of new evidence, letters, testimony will be received by the city and how to ensure that, that your submission gets in appropriately to be considered by me.
Thank you. So by November 23rd, by 4:00 p.m., which is consistent with the close of City Hall permit center hours, all open record comments must be submitted. Those can be emailed to me if they're date stamped prior to 4:00 p.m., November 23rd, If, you know, most of these people are on, are, are online already, but if by chance you cannot have access to email, then you can deliver a, a printed letter to City Hall, to the western doors. Just call the phone number on the western doors of City Hall and someone will get that written letter and will scan it and email it to me because we, except for very few individuals, there's not many staff in City Hall overall working remotely. So those are the two methods. You can also call me, but, you know, to get your, your message across accurately, I encourage written submission, whether it be email, which is preferred, or a hard copy to City Hall.
Thank you, Karen. And I also wanted to reiterate, Karen made a comment a little bit earlier about a couple of participants to please ensure that if they wish to have notice of the final decision when it's issued, to please reach out to Karen at the email that she just stated again for the record. Okay, well, I appreciate everyone coming today and participating. I just went through the, the open record period. So I look forward to receiving a new material during that time. As I mentioned earlier, my decision will be based on everything that is part of the record, which currently, as of this, the date of the hearing, includes the application materials and comment letters that were submitted prior to the hearing and any evidence that has been received by the city on this application. That's all uploaded to ePlans. I access ePlans and review the materials that constitute the record. So, and then my decision will be based on the evidence in the record and the standards as set forth in the code. I appreciate everyone's time once again, and we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.